Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting, I'll call the order of the Board of Education meeting for January 22nd, 2020, a committee to hold meeting, and Mrs. Hutchinson, please call roll.
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent, Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Would you please say we'd like a pledge?
Pledgeance to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshops, any? Sent by Mrs. Crabtree, second by Mr. Hanlon. Uh, can I have a, Mrs. Hutchinson, call roll.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, um, three items on the agenda tonight. First is business services, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, I'm gonna hand it right over to Mr. Partley with, without a lot of introduction, I think, the board is accustomed to your five-year projections coming to you at this meeting, so this really fits with the budget development cycle that our timeline that Mr. Partley shared at the last board meeting, this really kicks it off, looking at kind of what our projections look like at this point in time, so without further ado.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, uh, we're gonna run through our five-year plan as, as Schuler outlined it. First want to touch on some of the fiscal metrics of the school district, I think they're important to share, and give a little background as we talk through, as we look forward to the next five years, what we can expect, and what the assumptions that we put together in this plan bring, but, uh, you know, based on the district's school report card that is being out there for FY '19, the district continues to run below the state average of spending per student. We're at thirteen-five forty-six, and the state average is at thirteen-seven sixty-four. The state of Illinois is tracking that, one's a little bit behind, so that's for the previous fiscal year for '18, but again, we have consistently spent less per student than the state average for quite a time, some time. FY '19, based on our annual financial report, our fund balance is at thirty-four point two percent, that is an increase over the prior year of thirty-one point nine percent, and five years ago, that was at twenty-nine, a little over twenty-nine percent, so the board has consistently, uh, I'll talk a little bit about balanced budget, not only had a balanced budget, but has accumulated fund balance over that same period of time to a point where we have the ability to spend some of that for some of the capital needs of the school district as outlined in our fund balance policy, which has that range of twenty-five to forty percent, so at thirty-four point two percent, the Board of Education is still in a healthy position as far as the fund balance goes. Our standard and force bond rating continues at double A plus stable, with a stable outlook that has increased over time, as well as the financial condition of the district has improved over the last ten years from when the economic downturn occurred and a lot of school districts were suffering along with what was going on at the state level, but the district is one notch below that triple A level, which is a very good position for our school district. Next, our State Board of Education financial designation, which is again, a designation that is looked at in all school districts across the state, we continue to be financial recognition, which if I is possible, this is the fifth year in a row that we've had that designation, we did have one year where expenditures were a little more than revenues, and we dipped down one level, but I think two or three years before that, we were also financial recognition, so again, just a testament to the work the Board of Education has done over time to improve our financial position and keep it in a strong financial step. Then, as I mentioned earlier, this is the tenth year of balanced budget, FY '20, the current budget year that we're in, so again, we're continuing that need to make sure that we are balancing our budget each year as we present it to the Board of Education for approval. I'll talk a little bit about Five Casts, this is a model we've used for a number of years, it used to be called the FPP, which was a profiling tool or modeling tool that allows us to look forward and use assumptions to take a look and see what we believe will happen to the, you know, school district financially over the next five years, based on the assumptions that the district sets up, so it allows us to do what-ifs, it comes in handy when we're bargaining, and we can upload our accounting system, I'll go through some of the metrics that are included in the, uh, the data elements that are included, includes five years' audit and annual financial reports, which is expenses and revenues, as well as fund balances, all that information is in there historically, the current budget year FY '20, and our general ledger, pulls our actual general ledger into the model, so the FY '20, or the budget year we're currently in when we're doing these projections, is kind of the jumping off point, so based on how we're set up for our FY, or our budget, that is the assumptions moving forward are based off of the current year's budget. We put in all our tax levy extensions and rates, all that information in there equals assessed valuation, and then finally, those district assumptions that we use as we move forward, and tonight I'm gonna talk to you about the assumptions that are used in this model, as we move forward, and how that impacts the district for the next five years. Our overall operating budget for, if we start, we're gonna start with revenues, is one hundred and seventy-two, over one hundred and seventy-two million, please note again, as always, that that includes our O and M education, operations and maintenance, transportation and working cash funds, we do leave the IMRF out in split noted down there, because when we look at our fund balance, the state does not take into account any orders of fund balance policy, the IMRF fund unless it's negative, so that fund is in a positive fund balance situation for the purpose of the modeling, so the board can see how the fund balance looks over time, we do pull the IMRF fund out for both revenues and expenditure, but again, this is information we shared with the board previously, obviously, our, you know, local share is the largest proportion of our overall revenue from the budget, at eighty-five percent, eleven percent comes from state, and four percent is federal funding. We recently just found out what our consumer price index is, and this chart walks you through the last ten years, with some historical information as well as looking forward, you can see that the CPI over the last seven or so years, or the six previous years, was kind of up and down, we had years where we were below one and a half percent, lately though, it's been pretty close to that two percent mark, historically, the Board of Education has used two percent as our overall assumption for the consumer price index, as we talk about during the levy process, the consumer price index is the index that is used for the increase over the prior year's aggregate property tax extension, so obviously, if we talk about local revenue being one of our largest revenue portions of our budget, this is obviously a very key index, we track it throughout here, and now Dr. Schuler from time to time does update the board how the CPI is tracking, we just found out last week that the CPI for this year is two point three percent, so 2020 levy will have a two point three percent CPI that will be used for that levy process, so that number is unknown right now, that impacts, will impact the 2021 budget and the 2122 budget, remember, the levy years don't line up with our budget years, so there's always overlap in those fiscal years with the levy for that year, but moving forward, you can see we've used two percent moving forward for the levy, again, these are levy, the years on the bottom there are the actual levy years, but we go, the CPI will be used, so we know two point three moving forward, and then again, the timing of this presentation is based around when the CPI is released, and then we've got two percent built into the model for the next four years after that. EAB new growth, obviously, new construction is another factor we talk about during the levy process and the impact of that, and I'll talk a little bit more about what the actual dollars mean as far as the new growth, some highlights to point out here, obviously, in fourteen and fifteen, we were coming off the recession, and housing was just coming back, in 2016, we had a couple of, uh, TIFs come off, Wheaton TIF I, and Carroll Street ended a TIF as well, so we had, saw that bump up to almost forty-two point eight million. Seventeen and eighteen, we saw the Amazon property come online in two separate years, so that was the impact there, this year, the estimates are down quite a bit, less than we even thought at the time we did the levy, we're still waiting to hear what the final numbers will be, we'll find out sometime in the end of March, but Milton Township, our largest assessor's office, was indicating that they were seeing a forty-two percent drop in new growth, so that obviously will impact the model, we pumped it back up in 2020 because of their assumptions, based on the property that's being built up of Berry Road or by Bauer Elementary School, that's a large, obviously, property that's going to come on the tax rolls, it's not in a TIF district, I think if you, if you look a little forward into our enrollment study that we have on the, on the agenda tonight, we talked about some of those new housing projects that are coming in, or new construction is coming into our district, a couple of those are in TIFs, but the Berry Road project isn't, so we've got that built into the 2020 model, we go back down to twenty-five million, which is usually about our benchmark for, for, for new growth, but with the exception of 2022, and that's when we have Wheaton TIF II coming off the, the tax rolls, that are onto the tax rolls, excuse me, and that's a significant portion of downtown Wheaton that has been on, been a TIF for twenty-three years, and is set to expire in levy year twenty-two, which will impact the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, so that is a significant, obviously, line item that's going to impact the budget, that number is what we currently know as far as the assessed value of that property, we have annual joint review board meetings where we get updated information on the TIFs and what the actual property values of that TIF are, so that number could grow, so we will continue to monitor that and see where that ends up, if that number could potentially grow as we go over time. Looking at other local revenues, I mentioned local is the largest share, our corporate personal property replacement tax is just over two million this year, we're keeping that number flat, we're also keeping all other local revenues flat, fees are assumed at the current level of collection for student fees and other fees that the district collects. Should mention that, should've touched on also interest earnings, we did notch down a little bit, the anticipated interest earnings, as interest rates do start to come down, and we saw that in our budget as well, that the interest rates are starting to come down a little bit, so our investment income isn't quite as high as it normally is, and will be, or was at its peak last year, but we did make some adjustments to our interest earnings based on current market rates. Moving over to state funding, ever since the evidence-based funding model, or what's included in our general state aid, came on the docket, each year, we've seen about a three hundred thousand dollar, on average, increase in that line item, we've kept that in the FY '21 budget, when the legislation was passed a few years ago, they had talked about reexamining the evidence-based model after fiscal year '21, so we're waiting to see what's happening with that, so we didn't make the assumption of that money, that those additional funds coming in each year beyond 2021, we're gonna obviously continue to monitor that, we'll keep the board up to speed on that, but we are not anticipating any new evidence-based funding beyond 2021, and we'll, if that does change, then we can update the model accordingly, that is our largest source of state funding, or line item in the state funding. All other state categorical money, which there aren't many left anymore, with a lot of it being collapsed into the evidence-based model, with the transportation, regular special ads, some special ad tuition, and driver's ed are all projected to stay flat at current budget levels, we also, for the purpose of the model, our assumption is to evolve the federal revenue at current budget levels, as well as keeping everything relatively flat in other ways, worth noting. Just some numbers to give you some, just some background on what, what different percentages or dollar amounts mean, every million dollars of CPI, or every one percent of CPI equates to about a little over one point three million dollars, almost one point four million dollars. New property for every million of new, new growth that comes onto the tax rolls, it's an additional forty-two thousand dollars, so if you start doing this sixty million, that's gonna, could potentially come on in a few years, it's obviously a considerable number when that TIF ends, and then our collection rate, we're fortunate, again, I always mention that we're fortunate to live in DuPage County, but every tenth of a percent that isn't collected is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, we are usually in the ninety-nine point seven percent collection rate, the county clerk always levies a little bit more, or increases our levy to make sure we collect everything, but every tenth of a percent is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Finally, our categorical payments, I mentioned earlier about the state funding, that's at about one point seven million dollars that we receive on an annual basis, so that number, again, we mentioned would stay flat. Before I jump to expenditures, are there any questions specific to revenues, or any of the assumptions we're using on the revenue side?
No, I guess the only question, if you look at this, where the EAB growth and you talk about the 2022 TIF coming in, I'd be curious, probably complicated answer, but I'd be curious to see how that potential revenue lines up with our debt structure, is there a couple of drop-offs coming up, and I know that's a different side role within our budgeting?
Right, now, this is basically on the aggregate levy, or the operational side of it, but it will impact. Yes.
I was gonna say, Ed, to you have, which, look, you have a four-year, a revised four-year ramp where you can actually lay those two things together, so I have your remaining debt service payments later into that.
I was concerned, Paulson, I was just mentioning, for the purpose of our model, will this, it doesn't include debt services?
Right, right, but I was just curious, so there's some, some few years down the road, there's a drop in our debt service levy, I was just curious on how the potential additional revenue from this TIF lines up with the debt service levy, I understand that's two different kind of families of revenue?
Right, and it'll impact twenty-three, twenty-four.
Is that levy year?
Yes. Yes, and the years are levied. Moving over to expenditures, again, just the notation that the, this does not include the IMRF fund, but it includes the O and M transport and cash funds, you can see again, obviously, salaries and benefits, like most school districts, that's a major portion of our budget, with purchase services, with the largest of those being transportation, food service, so we love servicing our, probably our largest purchase services, supplies and materials, capital, and other objects that are five percent, termination benefits are less than one percent, but you, our overall expenditures are about, just under a hundred and seventy-two million dollars for those funds. Moving forward on the expenditure assumptions, I mean, obviously, I mentioned salaries are our largest line item, we have two and a half percent built into the model for fiscal year '21 and '22 on the teacher's contract, that is the floor of the teacher contract for, for increases, CPI did, it's also based off a blended CPI, so as we see the CPI creep up a little bit, we're still not at that floor, but we're getting closer, obviously, so we'll see what the next couple of years of CPI brings, we also have built into the model costs for lane movement, as well as the microfinancials that is part of the new contract, and this is the first year with micros expenditure in it, so we've included that in, in the budget years '21 and '22, after that, we've tied it to the CPI, which we've historically done when making those assumptions, because obviously, it's the new bargain, one of the bigger changes that we're seeing this year in the model that we didn't see last year, I think last year when we had this conversation, we had about twelve retirees in, I think we're almost up to thirty now, so we've had a significant uptick in the number of retirees that are planning to go out this year, which obviously will have an impact on next year's budget, if you have thirty teachers and they're averaging about a hundred thousand dollars in salary going out, and you're bringing those same thirty teachers back at fifty thousand, the savings is obviously greater than if you have ten going out, or ten or twelve, so the model does include the, the known retirements for this coming year, that will impact next year's budget, and we'll show you how that affects the model moving forward, for all other staff, we have classified in at two point one, which is their blended CPI for next year, and then two percent moving forward, admins, we have a one and a half percent, we'll continue to, that's obviously a yearly decision, it's not a bargain group, but usually falls in line with what classified are receiving, and then the model assumes that we are going to remain flat in our overall staffing for the school district, that there's not going to be any decreases or increases in staff, so remain relatively flat.
So, just going to pre-comment on this, but on the revenue side, if I look, if I look back at the sensitivity drivers, you have tons of the tax levy, right, some basic assumptions there, does that put us in net reduction revenue there, because I did the rough math.
It's, it's, the two point three percent CPI with the, with the reduction in new growth that we had, I think it was around eleven million, roughly ten million less than we thought we were gonna get, so that's about four hundred and twenty thousand, and when you add in the, the three tenths of a percent, the CPI was higher, it's a lot of wash.
Again, I was wondering if we have an offset, or a loss, or maybe offset some of the savings or secret salaries?
Not as far as the CPI goes, not as far as our largest, they basically worked out to about one.
So, is 2021 the year that the teacher contract expires, or is it twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Okay, yeah, and then what about classified?
They're up next year.
How much is one percent on salaries worth, about, overall, entire district?
Yeah, or even just on the teachers? Teachers are probably nine hundred thousand roughly, per each percent, yeah.
Thanks.
Moving over to health and dental benefits, we've got a three percent over the next five years built in for health and dental benefits increases, one thing that changed from the time, again, we spoke last year at this time, to when we actually had our health and dental benefits come back, we had no increases, so that three percent that we had built into this, this coming budget year, in the model last year, when we were on, in the FY '19 budget, that three percent did come to fruition, because we had a great year and a great renewal, and so three percent on our medical dental is probably about, close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's a, obviously, a savings too, when you look at the model and, and your overall costs, so, but we've got that three percent built in moving forward, our year, this year is going well, we're still, are running under our, our overall anticipated cost, so that's always a good thing, there's, there's still some time built in the year, and we'll start to get some estimates of year moving forward, of what we're looking at for our next benefit year. Moving over to purchase services, supplies, capital, outland tuition, we're keeping most of the spending flat there, I did mention the outsources contracts, those are tied into CPI, so we built in two point three on those, I'll tell you, as I mentioned, I think during the budget cycle, finding folks in the food service and custodial ranks, along with bus drivers, is becoming very difficult, so we anticipate needing to request all two point three percent for salary increases for next year for those folks, because we're starting to lose some people to, as some of the other companies and other school districts are offering more money, we're starting to see some attrition out of our custodial ranks, even to going to other school districts and such, and we talked, we probably did this impact, it's already impacted bus drivers, but we're starting to see it in some of the other ranks as well, so we've built that two point three percent for next year, and then two percent in the model going forward, transportation, we have three percent built in, and again, that's, we run a little bit higher based on the bids, we've got a multi bid with that, or with three percent increases, and we'll be probably up to that here in a few years, depending on what, whether we get, once the contract expires, we'll see what the renewal rates are, but we've got three percent built in right now in transportation.
Well, for all of this, how is, for those that maybe right now are currently under minimum wage, how is the new logic minimum wage and ramp up happening, and just thinking, thinking even contractually, deal with our, how are we seeing?
You're, you will be fine with your current collective bargaining agreement, but we are going to obviously have to factor that into the next round of collective bargaining, that will start to, in that window of time, impact some folks, so that's something that Kristi Coons in the HR department has been working on, she actually has a year-by-year chart of at what point in what year it starts to impact certain classifications of employees based on what their current starting wage is, so we've really got that mapped out, and I think the last piece that Bill and Kristi are starting to work on, just to kind of understand it, is just what, what's the cost assumption then to the district, obviously, the outcome of collective bargaining will drive it, but I do want to just project where that's gonna start to have some cost drivers, it should wrap those pieces up, but it steps in.
I'm guessing that some of our, even within our food service, as well as maybe our custodial, there may be people who are under minimum wage right now, and if that's gonna play a part, then I'm guessing in contracts.
Some outsourced.
Yeah.
Moving forward to capital spending, and I know that Dr. Schuler mentioned the ramp up document is in your green folder, for FY '21, the budget will be increasing in O and M, again, up to five point two million, as we move up a million a year, and draw down a little bit of fund balance at the same time through that ramp process, so we've got that two million dollar transfer for next year in the, in the model, which will be illustrated here in a second, in FY '22, and then in FY '23, the O and M will increase by a million again, but there's no fund balance because we've reached the target number, and we'll have to continue to monitor and see how, how the Sherman Dergis formula, as we've made millions of dollars of progress here, how that impacts the overall need for Sherman Dergis moving forward, and what that dollar trigger number is for Sherman Dergis, but, so that is all including the model, and when I get to the aggregate report, I'll show that, you'll see how that's illustrated. Just some foundational assumptions, these are kind of the ones we make sure we have in here, no legislative changes in school funding, obviously, the food space was the last big one, but we, no change to the property tax cap laws, that cost pension shift has not been spoken, I haven't talked about it lately, but it's always something we want to just make note of, it includes a known, and we've got some projected retirements, I talked a little bit about the impact this year, jumping up almost thirty teachers compared to where we were at last year, and that impact, and we used that fifty, I mentioned earlier, fifty thousand is kind of the benchmark for bringing in new teachers, and then that the current budget comes in close to where we anticipated, so those are the additional assumptions that we have included as we present the model today. So this is the aggregate report, which you're used to seeing, if you look on the far left, that is our fiscal year budget for 2020, the budget as adopted, anticipated a four hundred thousand dollar surplus this year, that number was higher than what was in, you know, the anticipated number for the model last year, when we presented it to the board, it was about two hundred thousand, so we already started off this fiscal year with a two hundred thousand dollar improvement over what we had anticipated last year going into 2020. If you look at 2021, that is the first year where you see the impact of, really, the retirement on the overall model, when we were looking at last year, we were projecting almost a five hundred thousand dollar deficit, now we're positive, three hundred, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Going out in years 2022 and 2023, you can see those years do have deficits, albeit somewhat small deficits that we'll have to address, and even as we look at the FY '21 budget modifications we make there, always kind of ripple through the model, you have to remember that, that anything we do, it can make a positive, or, you know, something to change drastically, it could make a difference negatively, positively, but you can see that we're, those numbers as compared to where we were last year, about $700,000 plus of a deficit. We were at the 1.3 million in 2022 when we were looking at last year. So already we're starting to cut into that issue, that deficit and obviously can work to address those out years. 2023 shows a slight deficit again, and then when you get into '24, that's when we're stopped, stopped the increase of what million dollars you're into O&amp;M. And then you can see it turns positive again, also the impact of the TIF. And you will have a positive impact on FY24. And then even out to 2025, we're still in a, in a positive situation. So overall, even compared to last year, the model is, is doing much better. And we've, we've seen some improvement in those kind of middle years that we still have some work to do, but feel it's a very manageable, those are very manageable numbers when you're talking about 172 million dollar budget, plus budget. So, so that situation has improved. If you go down to the other financing sources and uses, you can see that, that use of fund balance, 3 million is being used this year in the FY20 budget. It gets to that 7.2 along with 4.2 in the O&amp;M fund. And next year, we're at 5.2 as we previously mentioned in the O&amp;M fund with 2 million of fund balance transfer. And then finally, the last $9,000 use of fund balance will be in there as well. Obviously, the number the board always likes to track, we talked about is the fund balance as a percentage of revenues. If you go down to the bottom, you can see that we're anticipated to be at, if the budget comes in as anticipated, just under 33%. And as we spend down, we get down to 31% and then 29%, and then hold pretty steady, just short of 29% a little, 28.6, 24 in the bank. We start to see the numbers improve again as the fund balance or the operating balance starts to get into a surplus situation. Again, if we don't have those deficit situations, that fund balance will obviously be improved over what it is indicated as here. Again, the budget, you know, we won't bring a unbalanced budget to the board in education. So we anticipate those numbers being turned around to positive. So overall, you know, this is where, based on the assumptions that we've presented tonight, what our five-year plan looks like. And I can take questions.
The vibrations in here and the paper shuffling is unbelievable feedback. So just use your inside voice, your outside voice to look.
Got it.
It's picking everybody up. We can hear it on the TV, so it's picking everybody up, so.
So just, just for clarity, I just want to crosswalk two pieces. So in Bill's presentation, he showed in the financial metrics at the very beginning, a fund balance just over 34%. Right, that's 34% as of the AFR from last year, right? So we finished the fiscal year in a positive situation, and so point in time, 34%. The reason that shifts down to 32% in the model on the fiscal year 2020 is that this year we're assuming we're drawing 3 million out of your fund balance to hit that 7.28 dollar number. So I wanted to just crosswalk that, that for you, and then obviously you see the, the step down. The other single sheet, piece of paper, really all of the same information that's embedded in the model, the difference being is we don't show you, I don't show you in this piece the actual percentage of fund balance, but just the raw numbers over your 25% threshold. So when this was developed initially, that's what's on the top, the original four-year ramp, where you saw that we had anticipated being 11 million, 11.5 over that 25% floor in this current fiscal year. And then that dropping down again as a result of last fiscal year, rather than 11.5, we're actually at 15.8 over that 25%. So that's reflecting that change as a result of last fiscal year. And again, so both on a percentage basis and on just a raw dollars over that 25% floor, right, we continue to, to be in a, in a good spot. Brad had asked the question, where in the model, so the additional piece that the spreadsheet has is your debt service piece. So the other change from the original four-year ramp to the revised four-year ramp is you completed your long-term debt restructure. And so again, the practical impact of that is that originally your long-term debt would have expired in that fiscal year '27 as a result of the last phase of restructure, and you actually cut an entire year off of those long-term debt service payments. So it goes from '27 to '26, right in there. But then you also see that kind of new step-down piece where we're, we're at 20.7 million. And then in fiscal '23, you see that first step-down to 18.9 for two years, and then the second step-down to 16.3 before you get to your, your last year, where as originally, we had anticipated that first step-down to 19 million, but then that holding steady for four years. So again, you can see now kind of modeled and all of this, kind of where those, those pieces come together. And again, it's really in that fiscal '23, right? So again, in the model, the levy year '22 kind of feeds really part of fiscal '23 and a little bit of fiscal '24. That's where on the operational side, you're going to see the impact of that TIF dropping off, right? That new growth of $60 million, which, which may be even a little bit conservative at this point as to where that would be. But that kind of answers the question that, that kind of that impact of that, that TIF year is going to fall right between '23 and '24.
Yeah, Phil, on the, the aggregate slide, in 2022, salary benefit cost will go up 4 tenths of a percent and kind of return back to a stable 2%. What's driving that one-year bump?
In, in, sorry, in 2022?
Correct.
Well, the salary benefit cost in '21 is at just under 2, and that's based on retirements. And then the increase in salaries for teachers as well as the lane movement.
Yeah.
And that, that dollar amount is bringing it back up to 2.39. And then in fiscal year '23 is we're, we're starting to get a 2%.
It just returns back to the stable 2%.
Yeah. Go, go back to your thing. I think it's the expiration of a collective bargaining, right? So when you move beyond the last year of collective bargaining, then I think we put a long-term 2% in, whereas the current collective bargaining is at 2.5 as a floor.
Got it, thank you. Other questions?
We, we say we'll continue to, you know, use this mod, we can use it all the time, but even as we get into bargaining with classified and with teachers, obviously it's a great and valuable tool to use for what-ifs and scenarios we want as we go through that process. We continue to update it.
Questions? So I, I guess, at the last meeting, so let me just make sure I understand. So the budget process we're starting now is planned for fiscal year '21, right?
Correct.
So in six months, roughly seven months, September, we'll approve the budget for fiscal year '21.
Correct.
And so at the last meeting for the board, I had mentioned that I've been collecting a bunch of feedback that we heard from the community and conversations here. And so we kind of updated the draft parking lot, which has probably, you know, more items than we've had in recent years based on some of that feedback. So what I had, what I would like to do is if there's things on here that are kind of potentially create structural modifications to where we allocate our money and that therefore would impact a budget conversation, I think we should have a conversation here tonight to let our team know that if you want to explore a little, a little bit more deeply what the cost impact of that would be, so that they have time to analyze that. Probably none of these would be able to be implemented, implemented for the next school year, because probably some pretty significant study areas that are required. But I think this is the time for us to have that conversation and, and let, let the, let the administration know here. We'd want to really explore this and figure out what the cost impact would be so we have time over the next year or two years to, to really analyze what impact, what decisions we can make, other places in the budget to accommodate that, if that's what we determine and what the community feels is necessary. So anything on here that people would like to kind of raise into the discussion?
I just, I looked at this list and I marked kind of what my top three would be, and not necessarily in any order. But, and not that we look at all three, I'm just saying this is what, what I, is the high school start times. I've just been hearing a lot about that more and more about that in the community. The balancing capital through Mr. Space Modernization, that's something I hear too, is that the spaces aren't necessarily conducive to what we need to do with our students. And then based on the feedback from the high school students that we had, our last chat is restoring the activity buses to high schools, really helping kids who can't physically stay after school because they have to wait to get home. I just think that, you know, based on our SEL targets and getting kids involved with an activity that, you know, we need to look at, making sure everybody can participate in an activity after school and be able to get home. So those are just, like I said, in no particular order, just if I had to pick three, those are the three I would pick and, I, you know, would be open, obviously, discussion, whatever else needs, if you want to, you know, choose one.
I mean, just before I even comment on other ideas, the one thing I would say for the elements, facility, capital improvements with other modernizations, I think that probably is a decision we would make within that 7.2 million capital outlay.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so the combination of what we're allocating plus what we're going on the fund balance, right now that's all going towards deferred maintenance capital improvements. You know, I think that doesn't necessarily impact the overall budget and decisions we would have to be making elsewhere. It would be impacting how we choose to prioritize and where we want to spend those dollars within that 7.2 million. So just within the context of that one.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's other, you know, committee, board discussions about how we want to do that, not necessarily study areas that we need to put in place to have a discussion about where we want to spend a bunch of the dollars overall, going to mind of shift or adjustment.
I mean, something that's kind of going through my mind is I think before we even start having staff spend a lot of time, some of this we need to really find out what is the community mind, or what is students mind? Yeah, I mean, like, like before we spend a whole lot of time digging into this, maybe the buses aren't really that big of an issue. You know, maybe it's, maybe they don't want the later start times. Or I think that we need to kind of put some questions out there to the community, find out what are their maybe top three things that they would like to see happen and kind of go from there. Like, maybe they don't want full day kindergarten. I feel like before we make that assumption that this is what people want, we should kind of ask what does the community want, what do our students want, you know, before we spend a lot of time and resources digging into it.
I guess I, yeah, I guess I thought, especially at the start times, I felt like that was part of, that's kind of part of it is finding out what people want. You know, as I've been reading articles on both sides of the argument of that, it, I'm kind of in the middle of, you know, as far as like what, whatever I think. But I mean, there's pros and cons to it just from logistical, from a family perspective and family dynamics of when kids are going. And, you know, it's interesting reading about communities that have been really successful with it and districts who have implemented it and got back. And, you know, are they implemented it and the next year, parents are, well, let's go back, let's go back. And, you know, so there's, there's a lot, you know, there's so much to think about with that issue, but, you know, I know it's a discussion, and it's going to be a longer discussion that's more, that's more than just about money, you know, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, when I look at this too, if we're looking at, say, 2022, 23, where we're already looking to have to find half a million, half a million dollars, are we saying, okay, we're willing to take 2 million and, you know, for educational enhancements, what is at the risk of what? Like, that's, that's what, you know, I mean, those, I think, before we start going out there and saying we want to try these three things, or we really want to dig into these three things, what does that look like? You know, I just don't want us to get into spending a lot of time and energy on something that's spinning our wheels and realizing, A, we don't have the money, and if we do, we have to make some significant cuts elsewhere. And B, the community maybe really didn't want that and value that and wanted something else. Like, that's my, where we give directive, I think we need more information from, that's just my, my opinion.
Good. One other thing, I guess I just want to introduce them to the conversation and then we can maybe talk about, you know, bringing a little bit of clarity around it, is that some of these items are also not incorporated in your current strategic plan, right? So I agree with you, like, like the, just from talking with and understanding or learning from some of my colleagues that have, like, moved a rock like high school start times, that's a huge project, right? So, you know, I can be able to layer that onto this team without maybe deciding, like, what do you want to back off from? I'm not suggesting this, but just putting that out there, you want to back off of some of the writing message production work? You want to back off of some of the SEL work? You want to back off, right? I, I don't know that a rock like, like that, I can, I can tell you around a couple of these what the potential cost impact is, because we've done it with a few. High school start times, if you're going to drop from three to two tiers, that, that is a two to three million dollar price tag, right? We ran that analysis, we, that was a couple of years ago, but it's not likely going to have changed significantly. Didn't get mentioned, but full-day kindergarten, we've cost out for you, that's about a million dollar price tag. Activity buses, Bill and I have started to, to talk about. I will say that is an item that really has already been in some level of discussion with our current SEL plan because we have asked kids that question and that data that will come to the board here in the spring when you hear from kids, what are they saying about how valuable those, how valuable? But, but how much does the lack of activity buses impact their ability to actually participate? Because even as a, as a great example, it was a great conversation at the last chat with the board, right? But, you know, the, the same student that expressed concern over a lack of activity bus also said she's got to be at work by 3:30 every night. So even if we had an activity bus, right, she'd been able to take advantage of it, right? I, I don't know, right? But, but that one is kind of in the, in the hopper. So again, I guess I'm also, I guess just reminding you with a few of these things as you think about timing, 2022 marks the end of your current strategic plan and really the roadmap that we have. And so perhaps both from a fiscal sense, but also a project priority sense, that's when we ought to start kind of queuing up in advance of 2022. Perhaps there's a process to go out and kind of reevaluate both board and community level what those priorities are so that any like budgetary piece also kind of coincides with when you would naturally be kind of re-establishing a new set of, of priorities. And again, we can do it. I, we work at the, at the pleasure of the board, so if you tell us to go a different direction, we'll, we'll pivot. But that, you, there's a couple of those big rocks, you can't, you're not going to be able to layer on top of the work that's already in progress without taking something off. You've got a talented team that's sitting with you tonight, but their plates are pretty full with kind of where we are. And last thing that I'm going to mention in that is that we have not yet brought to you, so not embedded in this set of projections are some of the costs that may be associated with current elements that we have in place. Chris is doing a lot of work in SEL around emotional supports, right? We've been looking at some opportunities for some like reintegration classrooms and supports for kids to address some of our emotional health need, and those are supports for kids to address some of our emotional health need, and those are going to carry price tags, right? That we, we've been working on and are in the hopper. Those are not kind of embedded in the, the current model, you know, there, there are few curriculum projects in the hopper. We carry an annual instructional materials budget, but, you know, we will have to look at some of the outcomes of Melissa's work. Obviously, the, one of your items on foreign language, dual language, right? That's a study group that's already in the hopper and what comes out of that, if we implement it, may have a price tag, so there's some of those pieces. So I introduced a lot into that, but I just don't know that it's going to, may not be as simple as just picking. We can, we can cost any of these for you if you want, just the, and that is probably easy. So I will say on, on these pieces, like, separate from should we do it and what will it take to do it, we can probably give you a cost estimate for a lot of these things relatively quickly, so you have just a sense of, you know, is it even a consideration before you kind of see the budget picture, you know, turn around a little bit?
Does the board have some kind of mechanism that where you get community feedback like that? I mean, I just, I can't recall something like that, just being a district parent, but that, that is, comes from, and again, I, if I'm getting some, you know, if it comes from the board, like, where do you, where do you want, you know, like, where do, not, and not just to get that, the community irking like, like, you know, what, what's important to you, where are your top three, you know, like, where do we get that?
Well, there's lots of mechanisms. One, board meetings.
Yeah.
Two, the citizens advisory committee, a whole community engagement plan, we've begun using college exchange for the course of graduate, which.
Yeah, I think about the course of graduate, graduate, maybe that will tell us, right?
Yeah, I think historically, Susan, not on an annual basis, you've historically done that when you're renewing that strategic plan. So you did it during Engage 200.
Okay.
We did it when we updated the strategic plan, so we did Engage 200, kind of mapped out the Vision 2018 plan that had a set of priorities. We renewed the 2018 plan and pushed out for years and did some targeted community engagement around that piece. You, you've historically done it when you're renewing a strategic plan and sort of reinvesting. So you don't have an annual mechanism where you just say to the community, what's on your mind and target your ideas, but we can obviously develop an engagement process to solicit that. I just, you know, my, my view, I just think you'd be a little careful even for your internal community, when, you know, we've kind of mapped out a 2022 plan to now then kind of suddenly in the year 2020, say, what do you really want to do? Like, you've got these pieces, we, I think naturally, like, somewhere around 2021 would be when you'd probably be gearing up to say, like, what does that next? Roadmap, whatever you want to call it, strategic plan, roadmap, priorities, that'd probably be when you'd be gearing that up and you can, you can design a process of that.
I think, I was just, just on that point, I, there's a really strong role for the CAC to play in that. I think secondly, we've made a, done a ton of work, Erica, in team engagement, communication, that, as Brad said, there's several, you know, touch points there that we might want us to harvest some information from, right? We've heard from the community in email and board meetings, so I think there's, there's stuff there that we should continue to leverage. I think secondly, your point about space, I thought was really important in that, and I'll go back to what Brad said, you know, the facilities team, committee, I guess we call it, right? They, that, that was heavily focused on maintenance and repair and, you know, maybe asking that group to think about putting some space consideration to that, which might change the mix, makes a ton of sense, which, you know, may not put as much work on the team, but really drive conversation at that facilities committee to think about that, prioritize it. That's been different, right? So I think there's a lot of, to that point, there's a lot of things that we're doing that we can leverage to kind of figure out what else the community would like, receive us to talk about or do, right? Because the point is, a ton of great work that we can continue to leverage and expand on.
Yeah, I think I was thinking, like, how the course of graduate, like, it's like a link that you can fill out on your own time and have some time to think about it and that kind of thing. And I, you know, and I think that's kind of more what I was pushing my head, I mean, I, you know, I've seen a lot of engagement and there were a lot of people there and we got, you know, a lot of feedback, but, I mean, I just get a sense sometimes when I talk to people in the community, like, they don't, they have these ideas, I'm like, send an email to the board.
They do that Saturday morning, too.
Oh, I don't know, but, I mean, that's, you know, only a couple times a year, but I try to really, but I think people are like, oh, you know, like, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do that, you know, so I guess I just want to get people comfortable with being like, I guess, that's probably the one thing I probably push the most when I'm talking to people, is like, please tell us what you think, like, whatever it is, like, because we don't know, you know, unless you tell us, and so.
So, so I guess the point on that is every August, September, Erica, comes to us with a beautiful, heavily loaded placemat, eleven by seventeen of the community engagement plan. And that would be a good, you know, thing at the committee level to, to start feeding that information into that plan, because that kind of helps the roadmap for, for that year.
Okay.
So I, just two quick things. One, Rob, on your, your comment about the space modernization and how that downs, I agree that, I mean, that's my idea, it's kind of my world. And it, it seems like it's a committee level, but to Jeff's point, if we get into those conversations, it's going to have an impact on our teaching staff, because if those modernizations are done well, teachers and librarians specifically will be the ones engaged at committee level, not just the senior leadership team, so kind of the load we're putting on our staff has shifted a little bit. You know, I still think it's, there's maybe value with supporting that and maybe going back and looking at our facility master plan, see where those priorities were. But I'm just pointing out that what feels like a simple analysis, at the end, if we do, it has an impact.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my intent. My intent was talking about allocation of dollars.
Right.
If that happens, I'd rather me look at it.
I, I get your point. I get it. And then, I guess my other point is, this first one on here, high school start times, is still a stone in my shoe. You know, we've, we've moved, I hear, we've heard about it forever, we just, I just heard about it at the CAC last time. We've moved finals after, before the, before the holidays. I feel like this is the one big thing that is not easy. I'm not suggesting we should, you know, throw something off the focus right now, but as we get into next school year, developing priorities and recognizing that it's a potential study, I still have strong interest in this, I'd love to vet it with the community. I, I would like, I mean, I understand the, you know, if we just add busing, that's a cost, a huge cost. I'm not convinced that the only solution or the only way to look at that is just add busing. There's other ways maybe that we can reduce high school start, or push back high school start times. I know that's complicated, I know it's a big load. I'm still very interested, maybe even in the next school year, next year's kind of priority planning process, what, what a process.
Yeah, that'll, that'll.
That's me.
That's at the pleasure of the board, right? So if, if, before you tell us that's a priority, then we'll build a plan and tell you what we potentially, but I feel like we, I would down that.
So my, my, I guess my two cents would be, before we did a big plan, I'd like to know, maybe is there some small piece of information, some small study we can do, or just gather some information on what other districts do, what, what works, what doesn't work, what do we know, what don't we know yet? Maybe you already have that information, I don't know.
It's been provided to us.
Okay, it's nice to remember.
By community. It's just the one thing that we.
Well, that's my community.
Yeah.
We gave it to the, we gave the board an update after, so I'm just reminding, we spent several meetings on it with CAC, kind of looking at not only the, you know, some of the research that sits out there that supports it, but, you know, some of the, the potential options, so.
I, I just don't remember that.
Yeah. I'll give you what we.
Before we start something, you know. I'm not suggesting we start anything now. I'm thinking as we move through the next six, seven months, get past the summer, start to log, we got priorities and work plans, if that's something the board will, would want to consider, I think there's an interest in parts of our community, that would be a part of our community that is only the parents' community, that would be the part of our community with easier access for their feedback. This is my two cents on this.
I'd like to see how it fits with our, our 2022, with one of our things being internships and things like that. If later start times push that ending time later, are we cutting off of, you know what I'm saying? Like, where they're not going to have that opportunity that maybe to have those internships because they're getting out later? You know, I, I'm the one who put it on here, I still feel very strongly about it, but it's more complex than it sounds. And, and so it would be, you know, I, I go back to, like you said, that what is our, what is our plan? So how does that fit in there? Like, does, does that hurt us looking at it? Does it help us? Like, those kinds of things, like, how does it fit with the plans that we have? I'd like to see that as well, so.
Yeah, even if it's like practices.
Yeah.
And then I heard there are practices out at six in the morning instead of at 2:30 in the afternoon, that could impact a lot of people.
And, and is it really going to give, so this is the other thing too, is it really going to give our students more of an opportunity for sleep? Or are we driving their bedtime later because everything is shifting? I mean, to, and, and a solution could possibly be cutting back on homework expectations to give them more time to sleep. You know, I mean, like, there's, you know, just because we're shifting, is that going to shift them later? Like, I.
That's a lot of issues that I have, and it's, you know, I've been, the last couple days, like, I've been soon reading different articles about districts across the country who've done this, and it's just so interesting to see, you know, I look buried and there were a couple of articles out there, and then, you know, I, it was a district in North Carolina that passed it in 2015, started in 2016, '17, I found an article, it's education, how I found out about education, we did an article on them. And then 2017, I found a local article about, it was after the first year, and it was like over 60% of the parents wanted to go back to the old, to the earlier start time. And, but then you have other districts who they have really good success with it, so it's just, it's just very interesting to see the different sides.
So this is not an agenda item on high school start times.
Oh, sorry.
This is an agenda item on our budget, we need to keep within the strengths of that. And so I, I just brought up the parking lot, is if there's issues on here that at some point in the foreseeable future, the board is interested in exploring more deeply because it gets an impact on our five-year financial plan, this is the time to kind of raise the issue and let, let our team know that, hey, sometime down the road, we want to explore this, not get into the pros and cons. Okay, I'm just trying to make sure, make sure we stay on topic.
I do, I like the idea of community feedback, because one of the things I'm concerned when I look through this was, what are we not thinking of? You know, what are some of the things we cut when budgets were down? And then also the capital, you know, we didn't, you know, we've got this seven point two million we're spending every year, but that's only addressing a small part of what we went out for the referendum for. So are there things on there that we should be considering as part of it? And then the, the last thing, one of the things that I'm kind of interested in, and maybe it exists, is a, what's our contingency plan if things go wrong? You know, what are the buttons we push if we have another 2009? Or if pension shifts and we've got to make cuts, so I'm kind of curious what, and I'm not asking for an answer now, but that's something I'd be kind of interested in as.
You're saying, you, talk to me just a little bit more about that.
The last one?
Yeah.
Just what would, like, I mean, doing jobs all the time, we build our budget and then what are the, if, if we don't get the revenue, what are the first buttons we're going to push in terms of that spend? So if we had, all of a sudden, we were in a deficit situation because of, you know, a tax shift, you know, an economic downturn, what would we do? Would we increase class sizes or, you know, what would be the first button to push? And I know it's going to be things that affect salaries and wages, because that's 75% of what we spend. So I, I know it might be kind of a rhetorical question, but to something.
We discuss these in our committee meetings, like, which ones are, you know, maybe that's the first place to have the discussion, is at the, at the committee level, if it's a facility-related thing, talks about a facility, if it does student learning things, talk about change, and maybe some of these could be discussed more there, just to see, do they fit within the discussions that are happening, the plans that are happening within the next year? Get a little, because there you can get a little more deeper than maybe we can right now, without requiring a lot more work.
Well, I would say if we, if we want to dig into this a little more deeper, at some point, we can get it on another agenda. I just wanted to, I just wanted to surface this in the context of five-year financial planning. But if there's, Chris and I, as we develop the agendas with Dr. Schuler, we've been determined if we want to have a deeper discussion, we're going to park that, you know, as we think about developing priorities and work plans and all that stuff for 2020, 2021 school year. So I, that's kind of my two cents on this. I guess, maybe to summarize this, great report, feels like we made some, a lot of good adjustments and decisions. And I want to say, it's not just board, you guys, I need to commend the administration, you guys work hard, I know, every day to make decisions that are the best in terms of our budget and our students, and, you know, our job as, as board is to kind of provide a little bit of direction, but thank you for all the hard work you've done to help us get here.
Just to fill in his group, I don't believe that, but I do want to just come back to this. I guess, I feel like this is really loose, the way that we kind of left this parking lot piece, and I guess to me that the, it feels like I'm not sure that I have clear direction in terms of what's expected, which maybe isn't for tonight, but then I would suggest we put this on, on a, on a future agenda, because I think otherwise, I got, I'm not clear what's expected and how much time, like, you want us into this piece, and I, and again, I, I just want to be, be clear when, you know, when I, like, talk about like strategic plan and the fitting of all of this, again, we'll do anything. I just want clear direction in terms of what the six of you here and, you know, one that's south want from us as we, as we move forward. And so the part, even the parking lot itself has sort of taken a little different process to get built out this year, because there is a protocol, just even in terms of like how things kind of make their way onto the parking lot, and typically that is like a board discussion that sort of even moves it. So I would, I mean, I just, without spending more time, maybe we ought to move this on to our next agenda, at least have a conversation. And the analysis we can do, kind of in the meantime before that discussion, is with, with the leadership team, we can look through here and kind of identify for you some of the elements that actually are already work in progress tied to current goals, and which of these pieces really would be new work, not currently kind of in the discussion hopper, which maybe that at least helps to kind of bring some clarity, and then you can kind of give us some direction on, you know, like I said, with, because there are two analyses we can do, the quick cost analysis, right? That's almost the easy part, how, how we potentially project magnitude of cost on these pieces, but then there's kind of a study analysis to, to, at least in our view, if we were to make the change, is it a quick change? Or is it a, like, you know, a, a, maybe a year, multi-year ramp up, you know, kind of change? Because, you know, restoring activity buses, if we did it and we spent the money, quick change, right? Like, I, I don't know that that would need to be like a, a study of forever, high school start times, that'd be a biggie, right? That's a big rock. Full day kindergarten, a little bigger rock, right, that's, that's on there, so.
Yeah, I agree with what you say, said that this has come to the conversation a little differently this year, it was really just my, trying to collect a lot of feedback we were getting through the first semester. If we're going to have, like, any kind of real discussion on this, we need to get this into the agenda, it'd be a public document. Right now, it's not a public document, it's just kind of a collection of notes. So before we get any deeper into this, we probably need to go through the right, right mechanisms to put that on the agenda, so.
And I mean, it almost feels like we're talking about things like, is it, we have some money where we can spend it? And if we had that opportunity, we're talking 24 or 25. So I hate to have you spend a bunch of time doing analysis for stuff that's, you know, four or five years out anyway.
Oh, the board always has choices?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Do I have any choices?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah. But that's why I think it makes sense what you said, let's talk more about it. But that's why I think it makes sense what you said, let's talk more about it. I don't want to drag it up too much, but I think it's important to remember, we have to anchor it on strategy. We're, we're going down the road on several things and anything we take away from that slows that strategy down. I think secondly, the, the amount of work things take is really important because every member of this, of the team and their staff and below them are focused on driving strategy. So anything we ask them to do takes them off strategy and I think that's really important to remember. So anchoring all this backend strategy is key to me. Secondly, this quick assessment of, you know, time to implement, time to study, you know, how, whatever, whatever that is, getting some kind of quick filter on it so we can say, yeah, no, 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 that might be worthwhile because it's not a big, it's not a big burden. It's on strategy or something. That would be fantastic.
So, so do you want this as a future agenda item on board members?
I think it needs to-
I think so.
I don't know, would it be, is it a complete hole, right? You know, conversation?
Well, whoa, whoa, Chris and Jeff and I. Probably going to have to be more meeting today, yeah. But the quick answer probably has to be more just because I think if ever committed a hole is, is a pretty lengthy-
Oh, okay.
-meeting already because that's master tech and, and, um, teaching and learning elements. And then you really only have one more committed to a hole in the, but it, this can be more than a hole.
I think the intention, the intention is right with the unintended, the unintended consequences may be, they just don't know. So we appreciate it.
And all these standpoint discussions, which is, yeah, such a nice stuff.
Yep.
All right.
Nice job.
Let's, uh, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the Portrait of a Graduate team.
Yep. Is there a mic? Yeah, there's a mic. Let's talk. Talk.
Good. All right. Um, so this evening, I'm just going to operate from one slide here. You also have to hand out, um, in, in your packets. Um, so I intend to give you an update on where we're at with Portrait of a Graduate and also talk about some future moves and even new moves that we'll be making as far as community engagement. And I think even building up the conversation we just had, I think, should play some of the key questions we're asking our community and then we're even going to be launching digitally even further with our community, is asking our community, what are the key qualities and skills that we want from our graduates? Ultimately, the skills and the portrait that we derive is a community engagement effort that will drive programming and decisions at our level, right? So, um, so I'm going to start at the far left of our timeline here and just, just give a quick refresher on where we started with the process of building a Portrait of a Graduate. We actually started in June of two thousand and nineteen with our, with our leadership team, our principals, our directors, our assistant principals, um, our senior leadership team. And we initially asked them the question, what are the key qualities and skills that we want from our graduates? Obviously giving context around that, um, members of our senior leadership team also present future work trends. You all saw that presentation a few months ago as well. Uh, but we're using Thought Exchange to ask that question. We've been driving that question to present date with many groups. So we've been at all of our schools asking that question using the Thought Exchange tool. We've presented in front of many of our community groups, from our PTAs to our Lions Clubs, many of these different pieces. Um, and that Thought Exchange has come to a close, but our, our next step, next week, actually, we put together a three-minute video that summarizes the thirty-minute presentation that we do to give context around the Thought Exchange. And, uh, this is why I know it's going to be pushing that out to our entire school community with the Thought Exchange link embedded in it. To date, we have, um, over thirteen hundred thoughts collected just on this question. We have over, uh, thirteen thousand eight hundred ratings of those thoughts. Um, and sitting behind that's analytics, is a set of analytics through Thought Exchange that is now putting those thoughts into themes and competencies. So that is, um, that is not a new piece to our structure, but I want you to know that that's ongoing. Um, and we've engaged a lot of different stakeholders and that and I only see that increasing as we push out the digital Portrait of a Graduate, uh, if you're on the home stretch as we come into March. Um, but as we started analyzing our process, I wanted to be comprehensive and knowing how important this work is, um, we made a few pivots and I think really, really good pivots. Um, our initial thought was to really present that question around the qualities and skills that we want from our graduates to all of our chambers of commerce as well. But as we met with the leaders of our chambers of our commerce, um, in early December, uh, it was Dr. Kyle, Mrs. Murphy, Miss Lach, no, Dr. Schuler, myself, meeting with our, our chamber leaders, um, we really started talking about what they were hearing from their business community about current employees and candidates. And we shifted our question that we wanted to use, and we're actually using our, our chamber leaders, and they put out a question, uh, to their business community, asking them, what qualities and skills do the best candidates and employees possess? And what qualities and skills are employees and candidates missing? Now, this is going to be a much smaller data set, um, and, and just kind of a tweak on our initial question, but we think it's an important data set also to collect, right? So that's in process of being collected as well. Um, and we're using the Thought Exchange tool for that also. Um, again, you see the timeline on that really ending, uh, mid to late February. The reason why our data collection really stops at the end of February is the second pivot that we've made is a Portrait of a Graduate design team, right? So we obviously, at the heart and at the root of this is stakeholder input, right? On what do we want for our graduates when they leave us? But we are also putting, or have put together a design team of over forty representatives from within our school districts, students, um, staff, uh, but then also members that represent our broader school community. Um, so we're very, very excited about that. That team is going to meet on March third and March nineteenth at Ween North High School. We have two two-hour sessions set up for that team. And the role of that group is to analyze or, uh, really analyze, we'll, we'll obviously bring the data sets to them, but to analyze the data and the feedback that we've heard from our business community and our school stakeholder community. Um, and then really to take the themes and the competencies that have been given that we see that our community desires for our graduates and prioritize those competencies. Um, and really say, this is what's an important piece and we'll listen to that group, work closely with that group. We've also been very, um, intentional around the people on that design team as being key community communicators and stakeholders as well. So we're not only thinking about the development and the finalization of the portrait as it is, but how does this work move, move forward, right? As a tool that allows us to analyze program. We know it's a tool that's going to communicate the desires of our community, what you could expect from a graduate, but there's work on our end that says we have to analyze them. Do we have the tools? Do our teachers have the tools? Do we have the professional learning in place? Do we have the program in place to actually meet the needs of the desires of our community? And our key communicators and the folks on the design team, I think, are a part of that conversation, not only in doing the actual work of communicating, but also giving feedback to our senior leadership team around best communication strategies as well. Um, in May, we plan to present the draft of the Portrait of a Graduate to the Board of Education. Our network continues to be ongoing in twenty twenty and beyond, uh, for how we effectively utilize the Portrait of a Graduate. Um, so at this point, uh, I'll stop, I'll take questions, but it's a one slider, but the timeline, you can see as we move it, move things along, um, kind of where our work sits and stop taking questions.
Is there a decision or a thought or just we did it already to connect with college recruiters and professional recruiters, I'm sorry, but like corporate recruiters?
Um, that's a great question. No, uh, actual corporate recruiters, I did, we have not engaged in it really through our chamber, our chamber piece has been our biggest business outreach. Um, on our Portrait of, uh, of a Graduate Design Team, we do have, um, some of our colleges, folks that sit at the college level and maybe connected to that, to that. We also, I believe, have somebody on our citizens advisory committee that sits in that, in that space, but I don't believe that they're on the design team. They've been a part of it, but intentionally texting with them. Um, I mean, since, like, we didn't exactly put a question to them.
Chris, do, maybe this is the same thing you were asking, but do you have, are you getting feedback from colleges to say, are our students prepared? Are they where they need to be to do well when they step foot in campus, whether they're at state schools or they're at C O D?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a few representatives on the design team, uh, both from College of DuPage and Ween College.
Are we sending out any of our questions like that to any of those type?
We did, we, we have not sent it directly to our colleges, um, but we will actually use the feedback, part of our process with the folks that are on the design team, we will use the actual Thought Exchange we're using from there. But have we actually asked the colleges directly, are the students that we're sending you prepared as part of this process?
Is that part of where that new math class came from was based on experiences of students in college of DuPage and maybe wanting to take a step back in math as well?
Uh, yes, so the new math class was specifically as a result of community college remediation needs.
And how did we know that was necessary?
Um, well, two things. One, the state passed a law that requires that you offer that. So, I mean, they did it based on statewide data that was looking at, uh, college remediation. And then, um, we were able to get a data sharing agreement with College of DuPage that, um, helped us look specifically at our graduates that were moving into non-credit bearing. So College of DuPage for a number of years would give us like raw percentages. This is the, these are the number of kids you have that are in remedial, but they couldn't tell us who the kids were. And so we had a number, but really had no way to like back map the students to understand like what was their trajectory through our piece to really understand, was it just kids that weren't taking fourth year math? Were they kids that were coming out of a particular sequence that were kind of ending up in that piece? So, so that, that was the data sharing agreement for the first time gave us the ability to kind of map the piece back so that if now, not only do we have the class, but Julie's been working with, uh, high school folks on a very specific, um, kind of recruitment plan to get the right students at least aware of or matched with that opportunity of the new math class.
I feel like I should have asked this question a long time ago, but have we reached out at all to recent grads to say, what experiences in District Two hundred served you well or what classes did you find useful versus what did you wish you had been on period four? Or, you know, at least one of my kids could look at classmates and say, oh, I didn't get what that kid got. I wish we had, you know, in one case, Kelp Three, because we all got placed in the same class, yet some of the people in my class had ten more turns. I have that kind of thing.
Yeah. So as part of this process, we have asked our high school principals to reach out to, to former students, uh, but it's been with the, to be, to be specific, it's been with that first question that you see there, with current and past, uh, students, not around the specifics around what class served you well or any of those pieces. So we, we've asked, we've cut it on that Thought Exchange.
And have we, when you answer the question, are you guys tracking what segment of population is answering that? Do you know whether you've got some of those?
Yeah, so that will be a part of the, for a great question. Yeah, you can actually break it, break it out. Is it a parent? Is it a community member? Does this mean they're a student, former student, other, they can write in teacher, all those pieces?
In terms of the business community input, I think you mentioned chambers of commerce. Are we going through all of our communities to get those? Okay, so we're touching all the segments of our business community?
Yeah, we have three.
Not just Wheaton.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's the Wheaton, Carol Stream and the Western Page Chamber. So when we met, we met with all three directors that really come canvas far median area.
And then I guess my second question was really kind of off the chart here, but there is all kinds of research that we highlighted a little bit of that about changing jobs and careers. Are we considering all that, that data as an input or is it simply just kind of an inspiration for us to do this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, actually both, right? So we got a great question. So we use it obviously, uh, as a background piece when we present to different groups. As you see, um, when we use the Portrait of a Grad, uh, design team, uh, we will not only use some of that to, uh, to educate on the front end, but then also as we start matching and prioritizing competencies, um, many of them sit with, we'll be using some of the future work drivers and some activities where they're matching competencies to skills, to pieces of the heart, the mind, and really trying to prioritize them around them, but with the context line being sitting behind many of the future work drivers that kind of sit within there. So, um, the lens that that design team will actually use, even though we're asking all those pieces, their expertise and lens will be, will be a part of that work. So does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I found an article just the other day from a Tribune that talked about the jobs that were going to go away and it's fascinating and stuff. That was the inspiration for that question. And I guess the, the next, so at some point, you know, we're going to get to the end of this, we have a Portrait of a Graduate, right? And so we're going to want to share that out with our community and, and kind of build support for, you know, understanding and knowledge and support for whatever changes we want to make. And so that, all those, that kind of, those kind of data points are going to be part of the why, the, the campaign that we have to put out to our community to, to get them to understand and support whatever we're going to be doing. That probably falls into that community engagement eleven by seventeen chart. And so having all that data, not just what we're collecting through this input from process, but the kind of the external research is part of that story, part of that story as a block, because that's the key.
I agree. I agree.
And I do, if I could just add to kind of going along with that why, one of the things that we, you know, and looking at other districts that have gone through this process that have been successful, um, Glenn Bard put together, for example, an incredible video detailing not only the process, but including in, in the final outcome, but there's a lot of that why in there too. And so, um, I, we're hoping to kind of achieve a similar communication piece to accompany when we, you know, push out that beautiful paper version that we're going to come up with. Um, it, too, like just pushing that question out, you need context behind it and more deeper explanation of it. So that'll be something we look to do too.
And I would imagine this, when it's all adopted, it's going to trigger another work plan, you know, work effort that's going to have to get done, you know, on this, how do we implement it? So we talked about that video and kind of that why campaign to our community, is that, you know, are we thinking that might be in the fall? Is that kind of the process? Not to, not to put any, put any deadlines on you, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I would assume that's kind of-
Where this, where this timeline goes.
Yeah, well, this, this, the timeline end, like it, it kind of goes beyond May, so it, it's going to be sometime after May of twenty twenty before one twenty twenty-one.
I, I would imagine, Brad, that'll be a good chunk of our twenty twenty state of the schools video. We may have a separate kind of smaller portion, um, just to describe this specifically, but it'll absolutely be part of that twenty twenty-one.
We're not done when we have a Portrait of a Graduate.
Oh, no.
We're far from done.
No, I think that's again, another input of humanizing our vision when we think about it, right? We use all of our, you know, our senior leadership team goes, I'm thinking internal now, but we go to, that's really where our work starts, through work with our, with our students. And we use all of our time in our meetings, we go to every building in the fall, we use all of it around the Portrait of a Graduate. Um, I could see possibly some of that time being used to build capacity around the actual Portrait of a Graduate. You know, obviously we tried to, we lost that format again, there's many mechanisms where this is going to continue to move forward, I think, really positively. But I also don't want to discount the input we get from the design team around key communication strategies. There's a lot of-
If you do your gap analysis in the spring, you wouldn't even necessarily be looking at programmatic changes for another year, right? You'd have to bring new-
Yeah.
-things to the board, course curables for things like that that are going to come about.
Correct. And I, you know, I guess, um, like, ideally, right? Like, like, um, I think, uh, there are already some processes, kind of, uh, strategies that are in place that I would suspect that the Portrait of a Graduate is going to- the Portrait of a Graduate is going to perhaps reaffirm, perhaps make some slight adjustment in direction, you heard at the last board meeting, all of the work that Ian is kind of guiding and leading around pathways and, and, you know, that piece, like, that's really well aligned, right, with the Portrait of a Graduate. Melissa's already leading the group that has really ramped up their work around writing and message production, like spoiler, spoiler alert, what's coming out at the absolute top of the list from the 13,000 pieces of input that we have is a whole area of communication, just the importance of our kids having the ability to communicate, formulate, deliver a message, like, I can guarantee you that's going to, you know, come out right up there. A lot of our SCL work, I think you're going to see some of those pieces. And so when we do the gap analysis, it may not be like wholesale, we're missing this, but perhaps we just need to pivot this work a bit, right, to, to fully align. We may find there's some areas where we're missing it entirely and, and yeah, we need to, to add some opportunities. So really in the way that, that like this is happening, we're sort of doing the visioning work as, you know, a big part of the train is already on the tracks and, and moving, and, and we're okay with doing that because I'm relatively confident what's going to come out of the Portrait of a Graduate isn't going to tell us we totally have it wrong. We just may need to refine or pivot some of the work and make adjustment. But, but to be honest, I think that kind of agility is really what organizations are going to do moving forward, right? We are going to be out of this, like, you know, and, and, you know, I've led you through some of the work, so maybe the like four-year strategic plan stuff to some degree, kind of goes away a bit and, you know, we have a set of strategies that are just constantly being checked, aligned, you know, adjusted. But, so I, I, I think, Chris, to that point, I don't think that gap analysis is just going to be like one point in time, here's everything we're missing and this is what we're going to do, I think it's going to be, wow, this is where we need to go, we already have four things in process we need to adjust and pivot, and here's what we're missing entirely, and maybe here's what we're doing, we got to stop doing it. Because it made sense, but it's time to stop, right?
Well, just, you know, that, and it's a connection to, to your question, Mr. Paulson, but it fills up with Dr. Schuler's point as well, and your question as well. The work, and much of the work that is being driven through Vision 2022 in, in each of our departments is also driven by the research, not only educationally, but built around the future of work as well. So we are, we are always considering that as an input and an output in the work that we're driving for our students already, and that's going to be a consideration point with the design team. So, example, we built the whole SCL framework backed by educational and future of work research, right? That is a part of our education process when we did the Portrait of a Graduate. So I think even to that point, we will see some alignment, but we'll see some things where we say, hey, we got to get better there too, so just to connect those pieces.
Okay, so, sorry, because we have internet, right? So I just jumped on.
We do it.
I hope we have it.
Yeah, yeah, we do, actually, amazing, we're paying the bill.
It's not free though.
We're paying the bill, that's what I said, yeah, yeah. But, but literally, there's, there's portraitofgraduate.org, just whatever, right? I, I bet there's 100. Examples of Portrait of a Graduate, right? So have we, have we looked at them and said, you know, what, what works, what doesn't work with these examples that are out there?
Yeah, I, we've certainly looked at our, at what the actual portrait looks like, right? So I think that, you know, there's probably two, to answer that question, there's one, how does it look? And there's two, what does it mean, and what does the word look like, and what do you do with it? Which I would argue both are important, but I think if we just end up with only a good looking document or vision, we don't do it, like, but that's an important piece as well.
So the word, there's a lot of similar words, right? So the, I think the point about what do we do with it connects to our SCL is exactly the right context, and this was lost underneath until I sat here and saw this.
But we will spend a lot of time with our team defining competencies and defining what those words mean that you see on some of those portraits as well.
Last thing, closing this, I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, and I, my Friday notes, that, that design team work, so it is two dates, March 3rd, March 19th. Susan has expressed interest in, in being on that, we kind of saved two spots for, for board members, we don't obviously have to, to fill them, but there is really one additional spot if anybody has an interest in attending both of those, those dates. We, we know we'll need both of them, we've kind of held the possibility that we might need a third kind of closeout time based on how quickly we get to, to consensus. So check your calendars, just, it would be March 3rd, March 19th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Wheaton North.
Is it, so that's still forming? I just got a question about that's, the design team, is that still forming?
We, we have invitations that have gone out, so we've identified.
So you're, you're, yeah, you're thinking who you want on this team?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a very important.
Yeah, we've done it through some of our existing kind of key thought partners, so we, we use not hand-selected, but we pushed it out through CAC and got some nice representation. We did kind of hand-select some of our partners like COD, Wheaton College, our chamber folks kind of emerged just through their leadership in the community, so a little bit of both, we hand-selected some people with some organizations, we just said, your organization has a spot, bring somebody to us.
Does CDH represent anywhere, is one of the largest employers in the area?
We don't, but that's something we could definitely, it's okay.
We do have a mental health representative in that health space, but.
So once that design team establishes their value, and that's kind of announcing that here's, here's the roster of people, you know, that is pushing like up to the community through this process, and maybe this 40, this large group of people is a bandwidth that we're incorporating into this process. I don't, I'm sure we can do that, but does it make sense as a value, sharing with our community, we got to, it's not just an internal working team that nobody is.
Or do you recognize them at the end, you know?
Yeah.
Part of the risk is.
I don't, I don't think so.
Why not, meaning other people want to jump in?
Well, I. I don't need an answer now, just for consideration, there might be value in telling our community.
I think that they're, one of the things that have been, again, a lot of districts have taken their processes, but we have been, we, we have engaged that thought exchange tool, tool, and through just our feet on the ground, like face to face, probably a lot more stakeholders than many places, so I think being very vigilant about all the different layers that we're incorporating into this, when we have the final portrait, only will allow it to move forward better because the more inclusive we are with the stakeholders we're using makes it more useful on the backend too.
All right, thank you. Still have one more topic. This is the discussion on the District of Elementary Building Capacity Committee Report.
Yeah, so, uh, we gave this to the board a couple of meetings ago, and historically, this is really just onto the board as a, as a written report, but we actually went a little bit deeper with some of the information this year at both of our interest and the request of the community, and so really, we don't have anything that, that we need to spend a lot of time presenting to you, this was really just your opportunity to ask any questions that you had about any of the information that was kind of was, was embedded in this.
I appreciated the question and then the answer to those questions, isn't it? I felt like this was a very useful report to get a good, a, a, a good snapshot, and so my question, one of my questions was, the answers that came to each of those questions, those were consensus within the committee that came up with those?
Yeah, we, we really after, we spent the time over a couple of meetings, really ended going through this, kind of came to those answers, and then actually the report that came to the board, we pushed out, we pushed out to the committee to say, here's what's going to the board, please let us know if we don't agree with anything that is embedded as a part of that, as kind of a final check.
Was it easy to reach consensus with that group?
Um, for the most part, I, I think that anytime you bring a, a group together, there were potentially some, some kind of agendas that folks came into the conversation with, or some interest that they, they did, and it took a little bit of time to pivot a couple of folks off of some of those interests. But I think by the end, we got, I think, pretty, pretty clear sense of that. And again, so coming back simply to the enrollment utilization piece, maybe a clear consensus around where our potential future pressure points could come, that being in the southern end of the district, but also I think universal consensus that we need the schools that we have, we're glad we've got a little bit of breathing space, but we don't have any schools that are grossly underutilized that we should be talking about a major boundary adjustment to.
When we made the boundary adjustment for Washington to split between Franklin and Monroe is a very contentious front, and I see Franklin's numbers are still on the high, you know, still on the high end. Has there been a discussion ever to talk about that split? Because I know that that's tough when a elementary splits between two. Has there ever, are, are there still questions or concerns from that community of wanting to be together? And are we still comfortable with that split? And is Franklin still on the high side?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I guess, I think it was in reverse order, looking at Franklin's numbers, you're, you're really not in a spot to kind of reunify Washington entirely at Franklin, right? If you, that would bring numbers back to Franklin, right? The only way, I mean, tied to like your space utilization, it would only make sense to move more of Washington to Monroe, sorry, I'm a stitch in the face, to move more of Washington to Monroe, so that, I, I don't think that would make a lot of sense. Interestingly, Chris, you asked a question, we really, I think, ran a lot of the community discussion around the 2017 referendum, the big referendum that would have added capacity in space, that didn't sell to the degree that I would have anticipated that it sold. We talked to Washington families about this plan would create capacity at Franklin and allow us to reconsider that. I didn't get an overwhelming yippee. I think it's people have moved past that now, I get, I get a lot of, we're okay, like, yeah, the split, you know, maybe not ideal, but I don't know that the Washington families that are at Monroe are like driving to say, you know, I want, we get a couple each year through permissive transfer, but, but I, I just, I was surprised. And again, that's purely my anecdotal feedback, I would have thought that would have been a stronger selling point to drive or push that capacity, adding capacity at Franklin, and it really, it didn't to the degree that I thought it would have.
So that, that community is, is comfortable with how it is?
I don't hear a lot from Jen, because she probably talks to Jen Craig more than, than I do, but, but I, we have not heard, like, when I got, probably five years ago, when I first got to the district, we still had a couple of lingering families we would hear from regularly about that boundary change, I've not heard a question in probably three years around it.
It was probably one of the biggest several board meetings that I attended, I remember one at Monroe, I mean, it was just, it was really a period of, of time, so I was there.
Tough split.
Can I ask a question about some of the charts in here about class size averages? So if I'm looking at class size averages, I'm numbered for all the elementary schools, and then a couple pages later, it says the pace impact math and then ELA. Does that mean, for instance, I'm looking at Bauer, it says, or it's an average of 23rd graders, and then I'm looking at the pace impact from English Language Arts, does that say that if you account for the kids going off to pace, there's really an average of 19 kids in the class while they're presenting ELA, so, does that kind of information ever get communicated to parents? Because I've, I've heard rumblings here and there about class size, and why does, you know, my child's course grade class had 28 kids, and somebody at another school has 23. Do any of them really start to think about the fact that there are kids running out of class, and maybe it's not all 29 kids always there? Is there a question?
Yeah, Chris, you had a. Yeah, one, I love the question, because the answer to that is, is, is twofold. We want our parents and our community to think about our, our certified staffing across the board serving all of our students, just like in this PACE example, which is one of the reasons why we really broke it out this way. What I will tell you is when we have a, a pocket that is a higher class threshold, our principals work to be intentional around communicating, here's how we are allocating these ratios, we have PACE, we work closely with our LLC directors to do flex grouping and different pieces like that, so we try to make it part of the conversation. But I, I do think, looking at staffing, this is just one example, even if you think about the way we're allocating intervention and supports and thinking about it across those pieces, this was the start of some of those conversations, I think those are, those are good conversations to have, so we can always be more intentional about that, because we do want to think about it that way.
It's not strictly a numbers thing.
It isn't, but I do think actually the, right before that, that slide you, you mentioned, Jenna, where it says the pace impact math, that slide above it on intervention supports and, and shows, that's really the way that I think our team kind of collectively has begun to look at kind of equity around resources, because I think that's far more instrumental, right? And what I would tell you, if you go back to the research that, that sits, you know, before it, so, so really in essence, what is going to tell you is that if, if the, if you have the space and, and the effort was to get class sizes as small as possible, right, you, you would take all these reading, math, PACE, EL resources and push them into core sections and try to bring every class down to 20 students. But what the research would suggest around student achievement is that you impact achievement far more when you offer specialized focus supports for kids around where their learning need is, AKA the reading intervention, the math intervention, the structured EL support, the PACE support, that, that actually, when you can offer those targeted, like, supports and structures, that, that's far more effective, even if it means you're going to have pockets where you got a class of 27, 28. Kids, because at any given point in time, what a lot of these ratios indicate is that you probably don't have 28 kids in that classroom at any one time, and often when you do, there may be a co-teacher in there for a reading block, right, that's supporting, you know, supporting kids. And so for us, this, I just think it's kind of a, of a helpful piece, and it, and it's, I think, provided to your original question before, right? We have to ride this line of also giving our principals some autonomy to look at how they best structure supports for, for kids, and, and when it's always a class size decision, that's really kind of our decision to say, okay, we're at this number, split, and put in another, another section versus, you know, maybe there's a better way to put a support in than, than, you know, splitting with that. And I think the last piece, which is interesting, is that really, there's a lot of color coding in it, but, and, and kind of like one year piece, but if you look at that class size and student learning piece, like, our, our analysis is going to tell you that class size does not directly impact learning, right? There, there are high numbers where we're outperforming district average, and there's low numbers where we're lagging. we're lagging, you know, behind. That, I just, I think there, you know, we get asked that question a fair amount and you probably do as well with the board, you know, that every year, there's a high section, right? And when somebody happens to be in a high section and they say, oh, my gosh, you know, 28, 29 kids, the kids can't possibly be learning. It just depends on the composition of the kids.
What's are these colors you have?
Yeah.
I didn't know. I thought there would be, I'm like, I don't know how to read this charter with it.
Right. So, we, for the, and again, this by school. So, number one, we obviously deliberately took the school names out of this because the point wasn't to create a comparison across buildings. But obviously, each of those letters corresponds to one of our elementary schools. And for each of our elementary schools, given their composition within the student population, Julie Ozempowski has set a learning target for students at that grade level. So, we know what the outcome should be on our local assessments for kindergarten students, first grade. So, this is reading and math, local assessment results, and where is that grade level performing relative to where they should be performing, right? So, you know, if kids achieve at the level that we expected, this is not standardized across every school because that third grade is not necessarily, you know, third grade. There are, you know, when you go back into the percent SES and EL, right? That impacts what you would project, right?
Every class has its own target.
Correct.
So, what are the colors?
Yeah, so, red means that they are underperforming to their target. Yellow means, yellow is they're slightly under, but very close. Blue, no, other way. Green. Green is they're slightly ahead of where they should be. Blue is they're way outkicking their outcomes.
Wait, so where's yellow?
So, blue is good. Blue is really good. Green is pretty good. Yellow is, we're a little concerned. Red is, we're a little concerned.
Yeah, I mean, just an observation from that point on the rest of the charts. I really had a hard time understanding what we're trying to say here without any kind of presentation. Like, I'm still not sure I understand what the purpose of the math and pace impact is trying to tell me. I don't know. I guess in the future, it'd be nice to have some kind of narrative describing what the chart is trying to say. Trying to just figure out on your own what the numbers.
Well, you weren't. So, I guess, let me just say this again. I'd be happy to walk, not tonight, but if you want us to walk you through this, the committee had all that, right? So, I mean, that was part of committee presentation and discussion. We could re-present this if you wanted as a board, but these were just the data points that went as part of the committee.
So, to these questions, yes.
I do have a question on the class sizes. So, I 100% agree with you. There were years I had 30, 31 kids and I accomplished more than years I had 18 to 19. But I do know one thing, when I had a large, I was typically a pace math room. So, there were oftentimes I had 12 to 15 kids that I was teaching math to. And I know when you get down to numbers like that, research does say that size number. So, I would love to know this year how Hawthorne's fifth grade, because to have a class size average that is that low at fifth grade, I would love to see, did that make a difference in learning by having that there? Because that's so significantly out of the typical average. That'd be my question.
Just a couple of kind of short observations, I guess. One, clearly, the South Side in terms of the two and possibly three major developments that are worth watching. And how those develop over time and where those kids go and what the impact of, you know, student enrollment growth is on the individual schools. And so, that's kind of one observation. Second one is, I find a lot more value in the enrollment versus capacity numbers in terms of our ability to maintain class size and deliver the types of programs that we want to deliver as opposed to enrollment versus the caserta projections. That's, I mean, I get what we're trying to do is measure, is our demographic projections kind of in line, but it's not as important to me as enrollment versus capacity, which has more of an impact on decisions that we have to make as a board in the future. This is my observation. So, no urgency right now in terms of shifting boundaries, you know, increasing class size, adding capacity to individual schools and things like that. But clearly, some point down the road in the future, as these developments on the South Side, Bournville, come into play, at some point in time, this board or eight board more likely, another board will have to tackle those.
We may, yeah. We'll have to certainly monitor what's happening in that space.
Any other questions?
I guess I certainly appreciate our ability, team's ability to pull statistics and meaningful data from our statistics. It's huge. It's awesome. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I also liked the very straightforward question and answers that kind of summed it all up for us. We've got to say a lot of work behind all this.
Okay, I can hang on to these. So, I think some of the class size stuff at varying times when questions come up. That really has never been like under the purview of this committee, but we just kind of found ourselves there in trying to answer a few of the questions. And I think even for our, for the leadership team, there's just some useful data in there that may help you at times answering questions when asked, so.
Maybe we should bring him Saturday? Yeah, it'll be preferred. All right, anything else on that? The public.
No. Speaking of Saturday, just so you know, we are gonna put parking cones out Saturday. We're gonna put them in the parking lot, though, over here. The reason I mention that is Whittier's doing a pancake breakfast that starts earlier than the chat with the board. So, I don't want to, we're gonna save you spots, so you don't have to park on, like, way down on the street. But I don't want to save them right in front here because occasionally, when we do that, we hear from, you know, understandably like, why do I gotta walk further when it's off the car? So, we will, your parking cones will be here Saturday, but they'll be in the parking lot right on here.
Okay, we have no public comment tonight. And I guess just a reiterate for anybody who might watch this in the next couple of days. I guess mostly, we do have a chance to chat with the board on Saturday morning, 9:00 here. And then, there being no further action to come before the board, an open session, could I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Hammond, second by Mrs. Duden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.